All right, this is the planning board meeting of December 28th, 2021 at 7:00. Meeting Room 1. The proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. We have Kevin Robinson, one of our members, is doing remote participation tonight. So we'll be doing roll call votes as we go along. If we could please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if everybody could speak into the microphones tonight, please, because our notes are being taken by this video. So the first thing we have on our agenda tonight is the whopping lease for Lindby's Path. And I got an email from the applicant this afternoon, and they would like this to be continued to January 11th, 2022, because of the applicant still right now and just couldn't make it to the meeting. So entertain a motion to continue Lindby's Path lot release for January 11th, 2022 at 7:00.
I'll make said motion. I'll put in that motion.
Okay, so Ellen made the motion, and Mr. Shea seconded. All right, all those in favor, and let's do a roll call vote, because we have Kevin on the phone here, so.
Connie Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
And Kevin? Hello, Kevin? He's not with us at this time. So we got 4, 4-1. Hello, Kevin? Must have stepped away. All right, so that's enough anyway to... So it was 4-4, one abstention. Okay, so that'll be continued to January 11th, 2022. All right, so here we go to minor modifications. We have a few. The first one is Weathervein and Patriot Pines. And just to... We received the decision from Amy Questle from KP Law. And just, I don't know if everybody... Let me read through it. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to... Well, let's read through the decision first, and then we can discuss it. So we have the findings, which listed the dates of letters and documents. I'll just go to the conditions. And condition 1 is this modification is for Phase 1 only. No revisions to subsequent phases are allowed at this time. 2, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of this decision for the minor modification, as recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, shall be submitted to the Board. 3, the applicant shall conform to all conditions found in the planning board decision dated December 11th, 2018, and a previous minor modification dated August 27th, 2019, for the above-caption project, except this may be modified by this decision for the minor modification. 4, no more than 15% of the triplexes will contain 3 or more bedrooms. 5, pursuant to Bylaws Section 3967, a revised site lighting plan and product information list must be filed for Phase 1 prior to granting a certificate of occupancy. 6, pursuant to Bylaws Section 3131, prior to granting a certificate of occupancy, a signed permit application shall be submitted to the community sign... For the community sign at the front of the development. 7, pursuant to Bylaws Section 3260, a Phase 1 planting plan must be submitted and approved prior to April 15th, 2022. 8, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, sedimentation, and soil erosion control shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during the construction, and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust or debris. 9, any outstanding balance of the review and inspection deposit account shall be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy. 10, prior to the issuance of a building permit, all easements, deeds, restrictions, and conveyances, if any, as submitted to the planning board, shall be executed and recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, and shall be submitted to the Carver Planning Department. 11, all ways, roads, drainage facilities, water facilities, and other utilities, including trash and recycling services within the development site, shall remain private, and any maintenance thereof, snowfalling, and any other associated cost, shall be responsibility of the applicant or its successor in interest. 12, in any unit where the garage and living space connect, a firewall, such as a 2-inch shaft wall, must be installed between the garage and living space. 13, a minimum of 6 units shall be low or moderate income units, meaning that they shall be sold or rented to and occupied by households whose income is not more than 80% of the area median income, which is AMI. As determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, POD, and DHCD, affordable units. Affordable units shall be dispersed throughout the project, with 2 constructed in each phase. The applicant shall be responsible for maintaining records sufficient to comply with DHCD guidelines for the location of affordable units in the project and occupy occupancy of such units by income-eligible households. Upon completion of the project and in perpetuity, 6 units shall meet the criteria for inclusion in the DHCD's subsidized housing inventory. 15, prior to the first certificate of occupancy for the first all-in unit, the applicant shall submit for approval the condominium master deed, condominium declaration of trust, and accompanying condominium plans. Together, the condominium documents. Such condominium documents shall incorporate all the conditions in this decision by reference. 16, and any and all fees and assessments levied on each unit within the project shall be in accordance with the following. A, the sum of the aggregate square footage of all units in the project after reducing the square footage of each of the affordable units by 30% to provide a revised aggregate square footage. B, divide the total assessment dollar value to be distributed by the revised aggregate square footage to produce an assessment per square foot. For each market value, a unit multiply the assessment per square foot by the unit's actual square footage. In the case of the affordable units, multiply the assessment per square foot by 70% in its actual square footage. Note, the assessment to the affordable units does not have to be exactly 70%, but cannot be over 70%. It needs to be a maximum of 70%, but it can be less. Any revisions... 17, any revisions in the condominium documents that impact an affordable unit financially or otherwise must be submitted to the planning board. All right, so that... Those are the conditions that Amy Questle of KP Law, who attended our last meeting, sent to us this afternoon. I did talk to Andy Gleins of Fossett O'Neil, and he spoke about, and I don't know if these have been addressed yet, about the... I guess he wrote a memo about addressing ramps and to move 2 signs at the entrance. I don't know if those have been done yet on the plans.
Hi, Bruce. Jeff Toccio. No, they haven't, but the intent is to get that to you within the next few days.
Okay. All right. Telephone's getting noisy. So the only other thing is, is I don't... We don't have a decision for this tonight, but... And this isn't a special permit, so, I mean, we are hearing this tonight, but the audience doesn't really have to be involved with this. Is there anything that the planning board members are happy with the decision, or is there anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to hear Andy Gleins' final comments on it in regards to the mailroom, because that's a completely new structure, and I would just like to...
Well, I think...
Honestly, I... So this is not a special permit, is...
No, no, this isn't a special permit, no. This is just a minor mod. So, and the minor mod was to cluster the buildings instead of having single units to cluster them into 3.
Yeah, I was fine with that, yeah.
And then the mailroom, and we talked to Amy about this at the last meeting, and we went through a bunch of laws and different cases, but basically what she said was that it's up to the planning board, but if the building was over a certain size, it would require a special permit or a site plan review. But since it was under that size, and it's only, I think, 2,000 square feet, I'm not sure about that, but it was... Since it was not... It didn't go over that, that we could include this as a minor mod. I also spoke to Andy Gleins, which isn't here tonight, but when we spoke to Andy about this, he said that it made no changes in the drainage or anything to do with the design of the drainage system, and it was... It just reconfigured the road a little bit. So he didn't... He didn't really think that it was a major modification, and it could be included as a minor modification. So I know that...
I've got those numbers. I don't...
Yeah.
Just so that I can give you basically the numbers. Under Section 3100, the number is basically, it can be a minor site plan. Proposed work must be limited to a construction that does not exceed a total gross floor area of 2,000 square feet. And here we've got 400, because the mailroom's only 20 by 20. B, construction that will not generate the need for more than 10 total number of parking spaces. And what we have here is 5 parking spaces are associated, once we have the handicap space, because it's got that extra loading area. And then C was modifications to the site, which in the planning board's determination do not materially or adversely affect conditions governed by the Site Plan Review Standards set forth in Section 3160. And the points on that just had to do with no changes in the roadway, you know, no changes in the number of units. What we did was we basically just grouped them. We grabbed 3, you know, and basically put them together. And then what happened was counsel, she put in conditions that had to do... The questions that you folks had to do was the separation, and she did put in the condition on the 2-inch shaft wall, that's at 12, and everything else that we discussed at the last meeting, excuse me, were included as well. The 3 points that Andy picked up, and your decision does reference Fossett O'Neil's memo, which is the 27th. And the 3 of minor pieces, which are... Sorry, I need some feedback. Which are add assessable ramps to provide a thorough route from Weathervein Drive sidewalk to mailroom. That'll be done. Second is revise location of one-way sign to be located behind sidewalk at north side of Weathervein Drive. We'll route that sign. And then C is add a call-out for assessable parking sign in pavement parking, currently only included on the mailroom landscaping and lighting layout inset. This space already meets the requirements of an assessable parking space, but should be called out as such. So nothing, you know, nothing material, just, you know, plan details. And we actually, I believe, we got this this afternoon. Sarah's call was, we can't get this done before tonight, but this will be done within the next couple of days. We then went over to Amy's memo and saw that she did reference Andy's memorandum. So in our position, that's covered, and we can agree to everything on the record, you know, such that we can be committed fully to that. We'll get that to you. And then I believe that you're covered to the extent that in your decision, it specifically talks about Andy's memo, and then I'm explicitly stating that, you know, for the record, all of those changes will be made and submitted to you folks within, you know, the next few days.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns by any of the other planning board members?
Yeah, quick question as far as for the disabled parking. Heading to the mailroom, you've got the... Am I correct that you have that marked as the center spot right in front of the mailroom?
Which one did we wind up getting a mark for maintenance?
It's on the entrance roadside, just inside, closest to the building, on the entrance roadside. In the center is the access out for the handicap exits.
Okay, so for the disabled spot is closest to the entrance, to the entrance side?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that was my main... That was my main question concern, was that it looked like... Wasn't sure if the disabled parking was directly in front of the ramp, that their parking would end up blocking it, but, okay.
Anything else by any of the planning board members? Do you have anything else?
No, I see they made some attempts to straighten out the lining of the buildings. There were still 2 buildings, but it's close enough that I feel comfortable with it.
Oh, they may have to locate some utilities out there too, to see if...
Yeah, there's a well there, yeah.
...how they can put those buildings together. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minor modification at Weathervein and Patriot Pines. End the decision.
I will still make that motion.
All right. Second it.
Okay, so we have Connie Shea made the motion to approve the minor modification. And Ellen seconded. All right. Kevin, did you catch all of that?
I did. It's a little hard to hear, but for the most part, I got it.
Okay, did you have any questions?
My... My questions were answered in Amy's decision.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, let's start the vote with Mr. Shea.
Connie Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, so that was approved 5-0. Okay, and then we have a decision. So we'll sign the decision, and let's do that now, since we have it. And I will give that to the court tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Happy New Year. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, folks. Glad you were here to get this thing rolling again.
Take care. Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
All right, let's... Okay, there we go.
You need just one of them signed, or you need all of them signed?
Huh?
You need just one, or all of them?
All of us, all of them, all right.
No, 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 but every copy, or...
Oh, no, just the one, just the one, yeah. All right, so that is done. Okay, so next... Our next is... Well, let's get this signed before I forget about it and we go up the top of things. Thank you. The next will be removal of CCA timber poles. And this is 324/340 Tremont Street. And this was a solar project that had wooden poles, and now they're going to be removed and replaced with concrete. And we have 2 of these projects that are next to each other, I believe. So the first would be 324-340 Tremont Street. So if you'd like to speak about this, Chairman Dambroso.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman Mackey. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Rob Dambroso, Attorney at Law, Dambroso Law in Plymouth. So I'm here on behalf of Pine Gate Renewables tonight. Appreciate you all making time during the holiday week for this matter. I trust everyone's familiar with this project to some degree. This board permitted the project in 2019, you know, previous project petitioner. My client, Pine Gate, took control of it in 2020. As Chairman Mackey pointed out, there was a shift in materials. When the original materials, the stainless steel, was determined not to be viable, they switched to timber poles. And then that was frowned upon, to say the least, by the Conservation Commission. We appeared before the Conservation Commission twice, the second time with my involvement on November 17th of this year at the Conservation Commission hearing. We presented an alternative to the timber piles, which I think it's fair to say delighted the Conservation Commission. And the proposal, which the Conservation Commission endorsed, was to remove the timber piles and replace them with precast concrete pilings that are fabricated off-site, you know, chemically inert material. So you've all had a chance to read kind of the narrative summary here. You've submitted the plans. I trust you all received the hard copies that I dropped off at the planning department. At this point, on-site, just to give you an update, if you're not aware, the racking has been removed. Excuse me. The Conservation Commission did encourage Pine Gate to get started on the removal process, you know, to that degree. So the racking's all been taken down, and we're here before you tonight, seeking your approval of what we consider to be a minor modification. Again, it was same project, same solar capacity, same footprint, you know, really identical project, just a swap of materials, which, again, I think sounds like everyone very much is in favor of that's weighed in on it. And we think it'll make a better, safer project for the town of Carver. And I've got a number of folks here from Pine Gate with me, including our outside consultants, if they're necessary. I think we vetted all the environmental concerns at the November 17th Conservation Hearing, but again, we've got the environmental folks here and the project folks, construction, et cetera. We're glad to field any questions, but I won't belabor the point. I think you know what the project's about, and glad to field any questions.
I did attend the Conservation Commission meeting, and we have the... We have Sabree Moore here from the Conservation Commission tonight with us, but they did have a very thorough meeting about this, and that they were going to remove the poles at the same time that they removed the poles and were going to replace them with the concrete poles. And they also did testing out there. I think that was more for conservation, more of what conservation would be concerned about, but certainly the board members here too. But they have done testing of the soils, and you found that there wasn't really any pollution that has come from these piles right yet, or poles. So they're going to be removed, replaced with concrete. It doesn't affect the... I think the planning board's more concerned with dimensional control out there and adding more utilities and things like that, but the project's pretty much going to stay the same. It's just that these poles are going to be replaced with the concrete. I know when I went to the Conservation Meeting, everybody in the audience seemed to be pretty happy with that. There was a lot of people there that didn't want to see the wood poles to remain there. So pretty much all the questions were answered. We do have people here, if you have additional questions, certainly can ask. But as far as dimensionally, this project's not going to change. It's just that they're going to just change the... What supports the solar panels. So if anybody has any questions, any board member can speak about it now.
We haven't gotten any real information in regards to aggregate sheets or MDS material data sheets in regards to the material being used. Are the posts going to be a different size than what was originally approved with the steel posts? Will they be sunk deeper? And what kind of footings will be used? And honestly, in regards to this matter, I think it is important that Amy Questle's advice in regards to modifications that are outside of typographical errors in regards to special permits would call for a public hearing in regards to this matter, and I would think it would behoove the board to address that issue. In regards to this matter, it seems to have been a lot of work was done without the board's approval and/or the town's approval, and I certainly think this regard... In regards to this, there should be a public hearing.
Well, I don't think I've... I didn't talk to Amy about this. It seemed to be... It didn't seem... It seemed to me to fall in the minor modification category, because we're not... The project isn't changing. But if you have concerns, you can let the people talk about the concerns. I mean, right now, I mean, I think it's just a minor mod, but we don't want this to drag out either, because the longer the poles are in there, then...
Well, the poles shouldn't be in there at all.
Yeah, there's nothing... There's no problem with pulling the poles that are there.
Yeah, I think they should be removed as quickly as possible.
And that's not dependent on tonight.
And I believe that they're going to do it as quickly as possible. And from what I gathered at the Conservation Commission meeting, the poles are going to be the same size, they're not going to be any deeper, they're going to be the same diameter as the original ones. So they're going to pull the wood ones out and put the concrete in.
Right, but the wood ones weren't approved by this board either. We approved steel ones, which I am expecting were probably in the 6-inch neighborhood rather than the size, and we have no idea. There's no information on what these poles are being replaced with as far as materials, size, visual impact on the neighborhood, because I can assure you that those wooden poles that were put in there created quite a visual impact in regards.
Well, as far as visual impact, by the... When the project is all completed, it's all going to be hidden from you. There's going to be a berm that goes up along the road. I know that this was before most of the planning board members, I believe that are here now, weren't here at the beginning when we approved this. I think it was the other board. But what happened is, is there was a lot of screening that came about on this project. So what you see now, out, you know, whatever type of... If they do the concrete, you're not going to see that. I believe we're going to have a berm out there, and then we're going to have plantings on top of the berm. There'll be some sort of trees, I believe. So, by the time the project is completed, you're not gonna see a, a bunch of poles out in the cranberry bog. It's, it's all gonna be hidden. And we, we took a long time, the last board, to approve this and to make sure that it worked, uh, for everybody that, that lives out there. So, we're, you're not, you're not gonna see it. Actually, it, it kinda cleaned up some of the areas that, that were kinda messy out there. So, um...
Well, again, I, I have to go by Amy Questle's, uh, statements last meeting in regards to special permits and modifications. And she says special permits are not eligible for modifications unless there's a type, uh, typographical error. And she said, she sent the decision to you in regards to this, but I haven't seen it, so I can only go with, with her statement.
Well, she wasn't gonna write, I, I haven't been able to get in touch. She's on vacation now, so, um, she didn't stay for this hearing, the last, uh, the last meeting. I mean, I, I can't get in touch with her, but, but let's, let's hear, let's hear what your other concerns are. And I don't know if Attorney Dambroso is...
Yeah, no, we'd be glad to speak to some of those. I mean, I'll, I'll make a general comment and then turn it over to folks that are better equipped to address some of those questions. But I think as far as the, Mr. Shea's remark about, you know, modification only being appropriate to correct the typographical error, that, that's a first to me. Now, I wasn't at that hearing when Amy Questle may have said something along those lines. But, you know, I mean, the matter that preceded us was a minor modification. Was that a special permit? I mean, seemed like we had...
It was not a special permit.
That was just site plan review?
Site plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's not been the practice of this board, in my experience, to limit the purview of a minor modification to typographical errors. I think that really effectively guts any discretion the board has to grant a minor modification.
This is a new board, and I, I don't see that that has been, uh, continuing. But regardless of that, special permits are taken on a site-by-site basis and, uh, do not set a precedent. So, any decision we make in regards to... But the information from Amy Questle is, uh, I'm sure available on the YouTube channel, and I'm sure you can review it at your leisure.
Yeah, I'd just respectfully say that if you're limiting this board's discretion to grant a minor modification to correcting typographical errors, that's really a Scrivener's error, or a clerical error. That's, I mean, that's not the discretion that the minor modification provision of the Town of Carver bylaw speaks to. That's just...
But you would agree that would be in our discretion to make a decision in regards that this is not a minor modification, or that this may be a minor modification?
Yes, sir, that's what we're here for tonight. Yep, and again, if this isn't minor, I, I think it would be hard to find something that qualifies as minor. This is just a material exchange, the project's the same, the dimensions are the same, the solar capacity of the project is the same. You know, and frankly, again, this is a vast improvement from what's there now. I think everyone would agree with that, at least everyone in this room, everyone on the Conservation Commission, the public at large. So, you know, we're here in response to the very serious concerns we're expressed about the materials. And I think to Chairman Mackey's point, you know, the, we've got no uncertain direction to get them out as soon as possible. Uh, we're very responsive to that. It's gonna be a great expense to my client, and that's what we're here to do. And again, I think to prevent that on technical grounds, I really think defeats the practical goal of what's at issue here. But we'll speak to the specific questions.
Honestly, I, I feel there's been a lot of, uh, issues in regards to this project, and it behooves the board to take, uh, all steps in full transparency to make sure that some of these issues, uh, are not to happen again, or, and not necessarily in your project, but in any other project in regards to this.
Well, but I, I think we're gonna do that with the new building inspector. We're gonna make sure that things go a little bit more smoothly. But, you know, all I can say, you had to go to the meeting for the Conservation Commission. It was held at the, at the middle school in the auditorium. There were a lot of people there, there were a lot of neighbors there, there were a lot of conservation groups there. And, uh, and everybody seemed satisfied as to, um, what was proposed. So, to go through a special permit, I think would just prolong everything for something that, that would, would take place anyway.
Was that a public hearing?
Um, it, it was, it was, well, it was, it was not a public hea-, it was a public hearing, but it wasn't a, a special permit, um, you know, people, uh, it was just a, a regular hearing, open to the public, yeah.
Alright, okay.
So, but, I mean, there were neighbors there, there were a lot of people there. And I think everybody was happy to get this done as quickly as possible and, and not to drag it out. And, and, and as I see tonight, I didn't know what type, if we were gonna have those large groups of people here tonight or not. And, uh, I don't see any, you know...
It's not a public hearing.
Well, with all due respect, the, the Conservation Commission was handled procedurally the same way that this one was, and there was a couple hundred people there, maybe at least a hundred. So, I don't think it's for lack of availability or lack of information that folks aren't here. My sentiment is that people were very satisfied by the Conservation Commission hearing relative to environmental concerns, which was really the impetus for the Conservation Commission taking the action that resulted in us being here tonight. And that's why we don't see people.
Do we have the recommendations from the Conservation Commission to, uh, look over?
Uh, we can speak about that, I guess.
We've got a revised enforcement order. I'm happy to share it with you. It's very short.
I was just gonna say one other thing. Um, before the Conservation Commission meeting, as I was telling some of the people here before the meeting, I was getting hundreds of emails a day about pull the poles, pull the poles. It was from a lot of residents in Carver, it was from conservation groups in Carver. And since that Conservation Commission meeting, I haven't gotten any emails at all. So, it seems like everybody was pretty much satisfied with the outcome of what happened at the Conservation Commission meeting. Then, you know, the, the thing was, is they just wanted to get the replacement, pull out those poles as quickly as possible to avoid any kind of contamination. Um, and, and the reason it's gonna take a certain period of time is that those poles have to be manufactured before they can be, before the wooden poles can be taken out and then the concrete ones put in. But, uh, from what I gathered at the Conservation Commission meeting, they're doing this as quickly as possible.
May I, Chairman Mackey, read into the record the amended enforcement order that resulted from that November 17th meeting? It's not very long. I don't think it'll take more than three minutes.
Sure.
I think it'd be helpful to everyone. Uh, so, this was the amended enforcement order that issued at the November 17th meeting, issued by the Town of Carver Conservation Commission. As voted on by the Conservation Commission at the November 17th, 2021 meeting, this amended enforcement order requires the following. One, removal of the CCA-treated timber poles that were installed for the solar arrays at the Tremont Street and Rochester Road properties. The timber poles will be replaced with the precast concrete poles as shown on the replacement plan that was part of the handout submitted on November 17th, 2021. And incidentally, I can share that handout if you'd like, uh, on the, on the television screen. Number two, until the poles are removed from the sites, they may be temporarily stored in such a manner as to prevent any leaching of the potential contaminants into the ground slash aquifer. The poles shall be securely covered and/or stored in a waterproof container or similar device to minimize exposure to weather conditions that would result in said leaching. Three, the dismantling of any hardware related to the solar array. Ancillary work off the bogs and/or work preparing the sites for the installation of the new concrete poles is permitted under this amended enforcement order. Or permitted is probably a better pronunciation. If additional work on the sites is required, the Conservation Commission shall be notified of said work. Number four, and this is the last one, following the completion of the removal of the timber poles, one additional sampling round shall be conducted. That's, uh, groundwater sampling and fruit sampling. The sampling shall be conducted in a similar manner as the previous sampling rounds, and the samples will be analyzed for copper, chromium, and arsenic. The results of the final sampling round shall be submitted to the Conservation Commission for their review. Note, it is estimated that the installation of the concrete poles will commence within approximately 90 days from the issuance of all town approvals. This being the last town approval. The timber poles that are removed from the sites shall be disposed of at an approved facility or will be sold to another party for their use. So, that is the find, those are the findings of the Conservation Commission, uh, just to make it clear. And if you'd like Jeff Huntley to speak to the technical questions that Mr. Shea had, we can do that. Uh, I don't wanna interrupt if someone else has a question.
Yeah, hey, Kevin, did you have a question?
I did, um, actually, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that this is gonna be taken care of, and I'd like to hear, like to think it'd be taken care of yesterday. So, I'm fine with it going forward and being taken care of. However, I wanna make it really clear that, um, the company that is now doing this work isn't going to, um, make any changes to what we have already approved, being how I was on that board, where we approved this project and something got, uh, changed, and it didn't come to us. So, in the future, this company is aware that they need to come before us if there is any change whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we certainly understand that. And, and for what it's worth, in terms of that last change, and again, I think this speaks to what we consider to be the minor nature of this modification. The building department issued permits to the petitioner, to Pine Gate Renewables, to allow the timber pilings to be used without bringing it back to this board. I, I think, again, that speaks to the zoning enforcement department, the building department's opinion as to how minor this change was. So, take that for what it's worth, but I think that bears mentioning, uh, particularly that it wasn't some deliberate, uh, oversight or omissions and not to come before this board. It was, uh, didn't appear to be necessary.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Fred.
Why aren't we using the steel?
Yeah.
Why, why did you change it to the poles, to the wooden poles?
It, it's a great question, and I can give you a more technical answer. But in a nutshell, the steel, it was determined, based on the peat environment, didn't have the useful life that was anticipated earlier in the planning process. It's kind of a novel application, this dual use. It's the first of its kind in this area. So, the steel actually wouldn't hold up as well as the timber would've held up.
I think we're doing a dual use right over here in Wareham, aren't we? And they're using steel.
Either, uh, I don't know, I'd have to...
We've never approved...
The one at Wareham, Carver, they do, we're doing a dual use over there. They're using the steel with no problem.
I don't know, it's all...
I, I don't get it, though.
Yeah, Jeff Huntley's the VP of Construction. He can give you probably a better answer than I can, I hope.
Yeah, hey, everyone. Uh, Jeff Huntley, VP of Construction for Pine Gate. So, after the project was initially permitted with steel piles, we, we conducted, uh, some more geotechnical, uh, exploration to determine the structural, uh, elements for the steel piles. Um, what we found in these particular bogs is there's a high level of peat, um, which, um, would require a very large, very heavy steel pile. Um, that would've been really difficult to install. And as Rob mentioned, um, we were, uh, very concerned about the acidity of the soil and the corrosi- corrosivity that would break down the steel and not allow it to work for the durable, useful life of the project. So, that's why we switched to the timber piles.
But now we're going to the concrete piles. So, I guess the question is, I understand where you were going, but we're not leaving, they're not leaving the, the timber piles in, those are coming out. So, uh, are, are they as benign as the steel? Steel, uh, ones that you were gonna use at the very beginning? I mean, as far as, uh, polluting?
Yeah, I mean, concrete's used all over the world in waterways and, and all of our houses. It's a very inert material. There's, there's very little that leaches out of that. And we can have our material experts speak to that. But it's essentially, you know, it's a standard concrete mix that's gonna get to 5,000 PSI.
It's not potable?
No, no.
Alright, is, are they still farming the bogs?
Are they still farming the bogs? Yeah, the plan is for this to continue to still be inactive.
And what would the acidic levels be in regards to potable versus standard mix?
I, I don't have an answer to that question right now. I'd have to get our structural engineer, or maybe our material experts can speak to that.
Right, cause there should be no leaching whatsoever into, whether it's standard concrete or CCA poles or steel poles. There should be no leaching into the bogs or the water systems in regards to that.
Sure. Do you want, do you want to speak to that, Pete?
Yeah, if you could just give us, uh, your name, please, where you're from, and, um, what company you represent, and, and speak into the microphone as best you can.
Hey, Joe. Uh, my name's Pete Dillon. Um, I'm a senior hydrogeologist and geochemist. Uh, I work for Tetra Tech, uh, and we're working for Pine Gate, um, as a third-party reviewer. So, um, the bottom line here is, is the aggregate, um, and the cement and, uh, the sand and the water will be the only things that are used here. Uh, the aggregate will probably be attained locally. So, basically, the aggregate is the same material that's in the aquifer, that makes up the aquifer now, along with the sand. Um, the only thing that's gonna be added, uh, that's above that would be the, um, would be the Portland cement. Um, and obviously, it's gonna be manufactured off-site, so any pH changes would be done there, uh, once it arrives on-site. Um, it's really just the additional constituents in the cement. And cement is calcicicate and, um, calcalluminate, um, which are both, all present in the material that's in the aggregate. So, um, I've got the percentages here, but in what they are. But, um, I don't think that's necessarily important. So, it's really, you know, and, and it's got, not really gonna, in fact, they, from what I understand, because of the weight of these, they need to be all manufactured locally, which means that the aggregate is gonna be local, um, and the material that's already present, um, in the aquifer, so.
Now, is there gonna be steel rods in this?
No.
No steel in the...
No steel rods, no, just...
What's the expected, I know?
There is some steel in...
Is there some steel? Okay.
What's the expected lifespan on the poles?
Uh, over four years.
So, over the life of the project.
Anything else?
How are these things supposed to be constructed? I mean, we have, haven't seen, haven't seen anything with regards to, um, the design of the, of the poles, um, and where they were gonna be put in the ground, how deep. Uh, again, like, uh, Mr. Shea was, uh, presenting, uh, or had, had spoken to, um... None of that stuff, uh, has, has been addressed yet.
But we, we sit over the plans. Um, these have the depths here on the first page.
Do we have a copy of those plans?
Did you get a copy?
Cause there was nothing, nothing was in the package that was provided to us.
No, we could've, I think we just got these. I would send this as, uh, somebody help me with this, uh, kind of... I don't know. Okay, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Maybe I can, uh, do this. Yeah.
This is gonna take a little time to review, so it's, I don't feel that I can adequately address this tonight, but I, I'll take the time to review it.
If I can give you the, the quick overview on the, the first page in terms of the depth. The, the depths range from 25 feet to 40 feet. Um, the piles are 12 by 12.
Is, is that what the, uh, the, the ones that are in already, are they down to those depths?
That's correct.
So, actually, so, you're gonna pull out a pole, and then you're gonna put a, a one in its place? So, do you know the length of each one? Was that documented? And is that how you're gonna do this?
Yeah, we know the length of the, what was originally put in.
Okay.
Um, you know, we had a, um, a timber pile that was originally, uh, 14 or 15 inches. And these will be 12 inches. 12-inch diameter.
So, you're not, you're not gonna make it any deeper than, than it is, you're just replacing...
Will there be footings with these?
No, they'll, they're driven, driven piles, just like you would drive a steel I-beam.
Were the steel ones gonna be this deep too? I mean...
Yeah.
They were, they were gonna go down, so each one was gonna be a different depth?
Yeah, based on the geotechnical, um, uh, exploration that we did and studies that we did, our structural engineers determined that they would have to be very, very large. structural engineers determined they would have to be very, very large and very deep.
Okay. So, it is, so, these aren't going to be any different than the steel ones, except they're just going to be- Okay. So, you know, basically, nothing's changed. The only concern is, is going from steel to wood to concrete. But the depths are going to be the same. Everything's going to be the same. To me, the, the main concern would be the, the pollution of the things, if it caused any pollution. And, I mean, they, I, I would think that the, the concrete wouldn't be polluting, but the, I mean, even the wood poles, if you read the documents that went with the wood poles, they, they were approved by the EPA. But, but of course, it did have preservatives and things in it. So, I think this is a much better alternative. I mean, even from, from steel piles that you put in, that must leach some sort of, is there anything that comes from the steel?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, the steel and the concrete would be about the same?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I, I can understand the planning board members wanted, wanting to go through this, but I would think if I was a neighbor there, I want, would want this to proceed as quickly as possible. So, that would be my concern if I lived next to this, to this-
And if-
This field.
I, I would also want to, if I lived next to the field, I would want to make sure that it got done right.
Well, I think that also the Conservation Commission spent a long time looking at this also.
Again, there's, there's no reason that they couldn't go in and pull the timber poles tomorrow if that was, if that was the case.
Yep.
That's, we, we do not have any effect on that decision.
I, I would, if I could briefly speak to that. It's, you know, from a preservation and least harmful approach to the bogs, it makes sense to pull and install at the same time, rather than put the mass down and trample the bogs twice. So, that would be a farmer's concern.
Yeah, I agree.
My, my take from the enforcement order on the, from the Conservation Commission was that the poles had to be pulled, then the ground tested before you could put poles back in.
Actually, well, I'm not sure how it read. Maybe it did read that way, Mr. Gasky, but I think the intention, you know, and, and again, Chairman Mackey was at that hearing, the intention of the commission was to have it done, you know, all at once, if technically feasible, for the reason I just expressed, and then have the sampling done after the concrete is in.
That's the way I understood it to be, too. So, the testing has already been done at the poles now to see what has leached out. And then, when they're replaced by the concrete poles, they'll be retested again to see if anything has leached out. It's expected that the readings won't be any different than, or much different than what they are now. And I was surprised to learn also, going to the Conservation Commission meeting, that there's already some amounts of these chemicals already in the soil, and just from what's in the, in the soils around here. So, so they, so the state, I believe, has determined the levels, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. And so, these met all the, all the standards of, of being acceptable. I believe, I don't think that the, the readings were any higher than, than the ground test of just the original ground around there was. So, so, so really, there wasn't any really detectable pollution out there. But who knows what would happen if they were there for years and years and years.
And again, just to get back to kind of one of the core questions here that Mr. Shea raised, I mean, I just can't fathom why the planning department would have accepted a petition for a minor modification, and frankly, why the form would even exist and be contemplated as, as applied to a special permit, if it were only to correct a typographical error. I, I just, I just think that's a misinterpretation of whatever guidance Town Council has given. There's a, there's a lot of case law, there's a lot of precedent, this town and elsewhere, of minor modifications. There's a provision in the bylaw for it. So, again, I, you're squarely within, this board is squarely within its jurisdiction and discretion to grant a minor mod. That's one of the functions of the planning board. So, you know, I think that bears repeating.
Well, I, I would, I would like to see a full plan layout with everything, because looking at some of the stuff, I'm not sure that it, I'm not sure that the layout fully comports with what the original design layout was, was approved for.
Could you elaborate on that? I mean, I know you're kind of looking at this for the first time, but we'd love to address those concerns if you think there's a discrepancy. I'm just not sure what you're alluding to.
Well, that's just it. I'm not, I, without being able to look at this a little bit larger and being able to see everything, to see everything completely blown up, to see, to make sure that all of the conditions that were approved prior are actually being adhered to.
Right. And again, I would just, go ahead.
You got, you drifted off-site by shifting from the steel to, to the wood timbers. And now, and now everybody's trying to shove concrete poles down our, down our throats. And-
I mean-
New information is being given to us as we're sitting here. And personally, I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight.
I regret that information didn't get disseminated to you earlier.
And while we're at it, Chairman, I am formally going to request a clarification on Attorney Questle's remarks from the last meeting in regards to special permitting and modifications.
I'd just like to take a vote on this tonight, and then we'll, we'll see what happens. I, I think that Attorney Questle gave her opinion, but then there were other circumstances as we ran into for the minor mod of weather vane, about building sizes and things like that. And then she said, well, it may not need a minor modification. It may not need a special permit. So, things change. The other thing is, historically, we never took that in consideration. Usually, when a project came before us, whether it was a special permit or not, we granted it a minor modification if it was just a minor modification. In this, in this case, I, I just think that the, the expediency of getting these poles out of the ground and, and replaced with something that isn't going to be polluting the area is, is important. I mean, we can, we can go to special permit. You could, you could continue this on for months and months, but then it isn't, it isn't helping anybody in the, the big picture is, you know, helping the people in the, that live around this project. So, anyway, so, let me do this. I'm just going to say, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minor mod for 324 and 340 Tremont Street.
Chairman Mackey, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? I, I know you're asking for a motion. You know, from a procedural standpoint, if we're not granted this minor modification, we're in a very difficult circumstance. We can't appeal this. This is administrative proceeding. We've got an order to remove the poles, you know. Again, things could really go off the rails here in terms of the outcome of this project for all stakeholders if this goes south. So, I, I would be inclined, if we, if it looks bad and we're not going to get our vote, and I'm not asking for a straw vote, I'd be inclined to request a continuance rather than risk being voted down. If I respectfully could, I'd love to hear from our fifth voting member, just to kind of see any input that Ms. Sordillo might have on this project before you ask for a vote. Otherwise, I think we would respectfully request a continuance because the stakes are just too high if we don't get approval tonight.
Okay. The, the, we, we need a majority vote on this, and it'd be three, three people.
It's a-
So-
A special permit, though.
No, it's a minor mod.
But it's a minor mod. It's not a special permit. This is a minor mod.
Too a special permit.
Mr. Chair, are you looking for somebody to make that motion? Because I will make that motion.
And I will second that motion. I think enough experts are here to argue the case in a positive light. And I think by prolonging it, we're doing more damage than to go to another meeting over this.
Appreciate that.
It would be, but you, you don't think, you don't think that six weeks versus 20-plus years?
I think, how long has this been in the ground?
It hasn't been in, they, they haven't been in the ground that long, that another two weeks would-
I think it's been in there long enough that it's going to start this.
Have you had a chance to review, have you had a chance to review everything? Are you comfortable, are you comfortable with this entire thing?
I am comfortable, yes. I am comfortable with this. And I think there's enough experts, experts that have gone through this, that we know that this is the right thing to do. And I don't think prolonging it-
May I say something?
There's, there's been-
If they're experts, why did they put the telephone poles in there contaminating the bogs?
That wasn't, that wasn't-
So, how much of an expert could they really be?
And the experts have been telling us that there's no problem with the North Carver landfill, too.
Well, that, that, let's not go off-
That's another subject.
That's, that's another subject.
But that's just it. We can't, we-
That's, we're not, we're not going to go there. We are not going to go there.
I've said my piece.
This isn't what we're talking about.
Well, we're talking about polluting water.
When-
Are we not?
When I looked at the specifications for the wood poles, although we're not talking about the wood poles tonight, the EPA approved these poles for this use. So, it's not like they did this to pollute anything. And it remains to be seen whether these would have caused any pollution or not. And they're in there, none has been detected. So-
And in regards to that, it was a modification to the plan, which they were prohibited from without coming to seek prior approval.
Well, but that's all, yeah, I, I understand that.
Mr. Gasky and I are just looking to get more information, and I don't think two weeks in the ground is honestly too much to ask.
Well, like I say, we, we just need three votes.
Bruce, what is Connie asking?
He's, he's asking to continue the meeting, to look at it a little more closely. But wait a minute, there's, there's already been a motion by-
I made the mo, I made the motion, and Ellen seconded it.
And Ellen seconded. We only need three votes on this. So, let's do a roll call vote.
Cornelius Shea says nay.
John Gasky says nay.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sordillo, aye.
All right. So, this passes as a minor mod, three to two.
Thanks for your time, everyone. We're looking forward to cleaning up the site.
That was only for one site, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I don't think we have to, so, wait a minute, let me see. So, this was Kevin. I think, okay, so now we have, we can go on to 62 Rochester Road. And what are these sites, Abut, or they're, they're nearby, or?
Yeah, they're, they're separate sites. I mean, you know, again, I'm, I'm happy to have the, the board take a second vote. I think that the permit, the modification permit was filed relative to both. So, I think, you know, procedurally, you, you had them separately on the agenda, but really, it was a single petition for modification. And the site plan review and special permit that issued was a single site plan review and special permit for two sites. So, I think you probably can handle them.
Let's take another vote, though. Let's, it's, it's, but that's the way it is on the, on the agenda. I just want to make sure. So, having gone through all the scientific evidence and, and having discussed the, about concrete poles, wood poles, and, and the steel poles, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minor mod at 62 Rochester Road.
I'll make that said motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay. So, okay, let's take a roll call vote.
Cornelius Shea says nay.
John Gasky, nay.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sordillo, aye.
All right. So, it, it passes, the minor mod passes three to two. All right. So, thank you for coming here, and thank you for hearing the, the residents and, and addressing their concerns. I know that there was miscommunications, and, and the planning board will have written in their decisions a little more clearly to try to cover situations like this from now on. But I, I do thank you for responding to this and to, and to pull the poles and put in the concrete. And I think it's a plus for the, for everybody that lives around there. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate your time.
I strongly request that we have everybody through here with all the technical plans to go back through and make sure that this project comports to the prior approved conditions that were previously approved.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to have to talk, talk to you, and I have to talk to Town Council, too, about doing a, I'm going to need something for a decision on this.
Yeah, I'm happy to take a cut at it if you'd like.
So, I can talk to you later, and then, and then if you come up with something, I'll send it over to Town Council so that they can take a look at it and see.
Yeah. Are you guys still, still without a planner? Your new planner hasn't started yet?
No, we, we, no, we're still looking for a planner, and I don't know how long that will be. We're going to try to see, well, pretty shortly, the, our old town administrator that I was working with to-
Yeah.
Look for a planner. He'll be going at the end of this week. We'll have a new town administrator coming up. And so, I have to speak to him about maybe trying to get somebody in the interim while we're, we're doing a search. But any help that I can get. And then I'll just have to speak to Amy. I wanted Amy to be here tonight, but she wasn't able to be here. So, that's just the way it is. So, we're just going to have to work out. And then I'll have the members sign the decision.
At the next, yeah. I'm happy to get you something, hopefully, this week for Amy to take a look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
All right, next. We have a public hearing that's continued, and, and this is for a special permit and site plan review. This is on the application of JCM Carver Acquisitions LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review. And this is 287 Tremont Street. And I know that, I think all the members have gone out there, except maybe Kevin Robinson, I think. But I was out there with Mr. Shea, Mr. Gasky, and Ellen went out there on her own, and, and Mr. Dion was with us. So, we did, we did go out there with the engineer, and we looked, walked the property. And so, I, I didn't see anybody's objections to anything. So, if you want to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Tom Pizurska. I'm a senior project manager for Merrill Engineers. And I'm representing the applicant. He's not feeling well, so there's no applicants represented yet tonight. So, anyways, we did stake out everything for the commission to review. We, right now, we're down to a bunch of punch list items with Andy, and I think we resolved them all. He sent out the letter today at 3:00, which he gave me word document, and I, you can see through the emails that you got that these are the exact words. His stuff is in italics, and my responses are in regular text. Some of the stuff is just basically, I think, courteous reminders to the board of things to attend to. And he says, "The applicant has satisfactorily addressed all ethanol comments pertaining zoning bylaw. Due to our review, basically, we have the following minor outstanding comments and recommendations for the planning board." So, there's no, nothing really to reply to there. He references Section 22- He references section 2220, the uses that apply here, that's been spelled out and clarified. Tradesman uses out back, the ice cream store out front retail in the first unit. He refers things to the building official for the placement of the buildings, the end of the package here, I have an email from the building commissioner that he has no problems with the siding of the building, fire department has no problems with the plans, pedestrian access is available and ADA access is here also available. We talked about section 3241 waivers for providing interior parking landscaping and the reason for, and the only place we're really, we are requesting interior parking, but you can see that we have substantial amount of green space around the site and Andy doesn't have a problem with that in his letter. We're requesting a waiver from 3251 for the 10-foot landscape strip and that's just in front of the ice cream store where we're gonna be having the ramps and stuff of the deliveries. He had some minor, I guess you could say scripters are drafting things that needed corrected on the sheets, revise the limit of work, so it's the same on all the sheets, that's done. Also, make sure that the limit of work is moved out to the chain link fence. We have added a chain link fence to the plans, it was requested by the Abut.
Could you, could you point that out?
Sure.
I know I did speak with Andy.
Yeah.
Just an hour before the meeting.
Yeah.
And he said that, you know, pretty much everything had been addressed that, that he was concerned with.
All the way down, all the way back and all the way down here.
Oh, could you show that again, sorry, I wasn't looking.
Up here.
Mm-hmm.
Straight across, back.
Okay, yeah.
We're, we're not going into the tree line, that's why we haven't presented yet.
Uh-huh.
And then we come all the way down the side line here.
Okay, and how about the other, the right side?
We didn't add it yet because of the site is special with the thickness, but if, in the neighbor's hair, if he says, no, David, I want a fence around all three sides, we'll be happy to have that as a condition.
Okay, so I'll just speak about what my conversation with Andy and, and he did mention the fence, I did talk to him, he, he didn't, he's walked the site before, but he didn't actually look at the property lines and the property lines weren't staked out until recently, so.
Correct.
I know the planning board members looked at the fence. Andy's concerned, and I think that when we walked the site with the planning board members, there was, you, you could see the bog area from the back rear of the property, I mean, there were still woods there, but to put a fence there would, would, would be good. On the left property line, or the southern portion of the property, there was, there was like a cot path where trees had fallen and stuff, wasn't really accessible, but at one time there, there was some sort of a path going through there, so Andy suggested, oh, maybe, maybe put a fence down that, that side of the property to keep people from wandering down that cot path on the neighbor's property. The right side, when the planning board members looked at that and from, from what I remember is, is that was pretty thick and, and there was a lot of briars and, and stuff there, so I don't know if that was needed or if, like Andy said, well, you know, I think probably you might need a fence in the rear and on that left property line, as you're looking at the property of the southern, southern side. So he also, but he said that was up to, you know, the planning board members, what they, what they thought. The other thing is, is he said everything had been addressed on the plans that he had asked for and he looked at the waivers and he said they were just minor waivers and he thought that, that that was fine to ask for those waivers. So, so that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Any summary?
It's, is there any question by any of the planning board members?
Are 18-wheelers gonna be delivering or loading, unloading on this property?
No, there'll probably be 10-wheelers, I would imagine, in there.
Large box trucks?
They can make them, yeah, they can make the maneuver in there, the ladder truck can make it in and out of here and the deliveries are off hours for the ice cream store.
A couple, the conditions I would, would be clearly like to see is that evergreens be planted to fully screen in the, the refuse area?
We have that on the plans, it's on the landscape plan and we also, if you look at the detailed sheets, I believe it's sheet C8.3, we did give you a photo of what we envisioned that this is gonna look like, an ice sheet or enclosure and a landscape around it.
It's A.2.
Please make sure you have the planned date for 28th on the spreadsheet.
Oh, this one here. Sorry.
Sheet A, C8.2 and you can clearly see, it's all detailed on there. It's a nice expensive looking sheet or enclosure.
Yeah, but they're trash. What are you gonna do with those holly trees, you're gonna say?
I, I hope they do, I told the client, I said, the planning board definitely wants those saved. Now, he said, he said he would see if he caught it, if he couldn't plant them, then he would plant some new ones, but those are the nicest looking holly trees I've ever seen. They were.
Yeah, I haven't seen one like that in a long time, those things.
Right, right, in, in the middle of the site, the, and the pine trees there, you wouldn't even notice them, I've been on the site, you've been on many times, but good luck, those things are really nice.
Holly trees in that area are not many.
No, I know and, and I, those really should be preserved.
One thing with the holly trees, if they're shaded by any kind of a pine tree or a bunch of woods, if you open it up, the sun will cook them.
That's probably why they're doing so well.
Yeah, they're in there with the, the trees like that.
If you plant one out in the open from the start, it's okay, but if you open it up, then we've done it, if we, we own the property behind and now do it past the older zone and we found one holly tree on the whole property and we tried to save it and by opening it up, the sun just brightened.
That's good to know.
I don't know what those are, but. They're, they're, you didn't, you wouldn't even notice them because the pine trees have grown so big, but they're right in the middle of where the middle plantings is, where they sit out back there, right in the middle of the site and we caught it out of the corner of our eye, we walked, I thought there was one and we walked over and said, holy cow, there are two absolutely gorgeous trees.
Gorgeous.
Berries on them?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Biggest trees I've, holly trees I've ever seen.
First time I've ever seen berries on.
Well, there's two here, male and female.
But that's what I'm saying, you need a male, female together for it to work.
So, so I was just gonna ask Mr. Weston, 'cause I see he's here tonight, it's, it, you know, there is a public hearing going, so this is for a special permit, so you can speak if you like, if you, if you could speak in that microphone, it'd be good, so the lady taking our notes can do it up. Were you happy with the fence? Did you see where the fence is going? I see that it's, 'cause I know that you asked for that, it says, see, it's a four-foot high black chain link fence.
Mm-hmm.
With no trespassing signs, does that, does that work for you?
Yeah, I, I hope that it, we won't regret not getting on on the other side, but other than that, it's fine with me.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty thick on the other side.
I know it is.
Yeah.
But it may not stay that way, I mean.
Well, then the other thing is, is just to put the fence in, you're gonna have to do some cutting out there, just a clear area to put it in.
Well, when I was, I didn't know what they had in mind, if they were gonna go to their boundary line with any of, all the other stuff that they're doing there, then they would all be cleaned up and then they'd be able to put it in, that's what I'm getting at, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion that I think will help.
Sure.
Why don't we put a condition in there that the north side fence area will be evaluated when the site is cleared, if it's needed, if it's so determined it's needed, we put it in.
The east side?
North side.
North side.
Which would be the right property, the right side.
It's like the northeast side.
All right, yep.
Right. And at the last hearing, Mr. Weston had some concerns over the spillway, so we put big, long riprap splash pads in there, these things aren't supposed to be discharging water, we put the wicks in to supplement it, segregated the roof runoff, but in the event that it does, it's got that long channel that's gonna be scalloped down to spread it all out, but these, these ponds, as you can see, are huge.
Now, the other question I had, and I brought it up before and I haven't heard anything about it, was the water usage permit from the DEP.
Yep, and we have to get that and if we don't get that, then this doesn't happen.
Now, have you guys managed to figure out how much water per day you're using, gonna be using?
We have it right now, it's 888 gallons, I believe, is what we had for the, for the floor assessment that we got, but we're gonna have Amy Re-Engineers is gonna be handling the wa, their wa, their water supply engineers, you probably are familiar with them out of Duxbury, but they're gonna go ahead and handle the stuff for the DEP water supply section if they need anything from me, I'll give it to them. But, yeah, it's less, it, the well is a thousand gallon per day well with a nine, a withdrawal, daily withdrawal of way to 999 gallons and we're at, I think, 888 with everything that's shown here.
Mm-hmm.
And that is stipulated on that this ice cream shop can only be ice cream only and dairy only.
Well, the only question is if, if you have to go above 1,000, how would the circle for the well, would that have to expand?
It would and we wouldn't have a project unless they were able to control that radius, the zone one radius, as you know.
Oh, yeah.
On that problem.
That's my concern.
Right.
You know, other than that, I don't really care, but if you're figuring it already out at 888, that's pretty close.
Yeah, correct.
You're right to the limit.
Yeah.
And that's including the usage of retail and tradesman storage?
Yes, it is.
And could you point out on the map where the, the well is located?
Sure. Right here. The 100-foot radius is over here and it comes over here.
Okay, yep, I see it.
That's what Jim is talking about, the zone of influence.
And where's the septic placement?
There're gonna be two septics. This one here is in the back right now, it has a capacity of 1,347 gallons per day. I think they went with the 1,347, you look the blood alcohol records when Nichols did the plans back in 2006, they had the home here, too, the home's gone, so that's where they had the home, three different homes, three thirty, so it's like you said, 1,330, so that's why I think the septic system was designed for 1,347, but we're gonna be putting a brand new septic system up front here with little tanks and everything else and that's gonna get everything further away from the well, that's gonna get everything further away from the neighbor's property and the blocks. And the one up back is gonna receive very low septic loads, we've gone, conventional total five on this, these two would be 60 gallons per day total and then this one would be 200 gallons per day. So there's only 260 and the system has a capacity of 1,347. And we'll put a new, we're gonna put a new commercial septic tank out back with a filter and new walls. And the other thing that we, we briefly touched on last time is to make it very clear that these are not storage and these are not maintenance, they cannot be a service garage or repair shops, anything that would be considered a land use with a potentially higher pollut load because it is located within a critical area, which is the zone two and interim water protection area. And the other thing is that this whole stormwater system has a long-term pollution prevention plan that requires the owner of the property to maintain this stuff, inspect it regularly, clean some of the stuff out quarterly, clean, clean some of the stuff out semi-annually, replace the mulch and the rain guns as needed if they clog up, generally it's around five years for the treatment soil, but it's a very effective pollut removal system.
All right, and a condition that loading and active loading and unloading for, for trucks in the tradesman area, that they are not to be parked there, that's for active loading and unloading because of the fire access, that's an acceptable condition?
Yeah, so what you're saying, trucks can't go back, back there?
No, parked there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Active loading and unloading only, 'cause that's, that's your fire, yeah, that's your fire access.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, okay.
Can't sit there overnight.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And out front there is the loading delivery area, it's marked, no parking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we've got rid of the two spaces out back and that's hatched off so the fire trucks can get over and around there if they need it.
Yep, saw that.
How many parking spaces are there?
Thirty.
Is the fire lane marked on the plan?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay, and that's to the building out back?
All right.
It's all around the building, all the sides.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's C.7.1.
Yeah. Oh, oh, the proposed 16-foot wide grass, emergency access.
Grass, grass paved, yep.
Okay, I see that, okay, yeah, I can make, we can make that a condition also.
And we did move the building back five, a little bit to give a little more space for fire protection between the two structures and Jesse was happy with that.
All right, Mr. Weston, have you had all your, your answers?
Well, I, I, well, yes and no.
Well, I mean, as far as, as far as the planning board's concerned, you know, you, you asked for fences, so we can, you know.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine.
And then we'll look at that right property line or the north side.
Well, like what he said, that's fine.
Then we can, we can make that a condition and as far as the, the wells and stuff like that, I mean, that's gonna be determined by the state and the, and the board of health here, so.
I realize that, but one question I know conservation's gonna have is they wanna know what's going in those three buildings there, those three bays, I mean, he says there's a store in the front end, well, what kind of a store and what happens when that store changes and their water usage goes up? If it does change and that, 'cause especially when they're so close to the limit right now at 888, for their figures, I mean, it, and then the other two, I know other people are concerned, the auto repair might go in there or a tire shop or something like that.
Well, he just, he, he just, he just.
Well, who's gonna police it?
Well, that's what the building, that's what the, building inspector and.
That's an easy one to answer.
It's not, it's not up to the neighbors to sit there and watch and make sure somebody doesn't go in there that's not supposed to, so.
That's correct and that, that's a, that's, those are very good questions. Out front, if you have retail, just a retail store, that's, that's a higher load of 200 gallons per day, okay? The tradesmen, that is what's going in there and if that retail store goes away, they're gonna have the floor drains in there just for tradesmen only and that should be a perpetual condition on the permit that will get recorded, so that doesn't happen. And the other thing is that this can't, and it's, it's right in the DEP stormwater regulations, they are not allowed to put any land uses with higher pollut load in here and that is covered under the DEP wetlands regulations, it's also covered under the drinking water regulations, 310, 22 CMR, they can't do that. DEP can shut that site down in a heartbeat if they've got problems that are gonna compromise that drinking water.
So does the DEP have to go to the property to, to do testing periodically?
What, what happens is that they have a certified water operator that has to do sampling and testing, report the flows and, and test the water and submit those findings to the board of health and DEP, which is public record presently on file with both of them. They have to continue to do that.
How often do they do that?
I believe it's monthly, I'm not a water engineer, all right, I don't, and I'm not a, I'm not a cranberry grower, I don't touch, touch.
So do they check the businesses that would be in those buildings?
I think the board of health would easily be able to see that, I mean, that has to, that has, and I'm, I'm putting the cards right on the table, recommending the planning and I'm, and I wish the chairman of the ca- and I wish the Chairman of the Concom was still here, same thing with Concom, that that has to be put in there as a perpetual condition. And, you know, if the building permits issued for the site, that should be a perpetual condition from the Building Department. Because I haven't seen that happen, and there's no reason it shouldn't be happening. We need, we need to protect the precious resources we have. I'm not a civil engineer that tries to develop every piece of property around. When I leave a site, I want to make sure that I left that thing environmentally sound, and we protect the farmers, too, and the water supply. So I'd probably piss off a lot of clients, but I do, I do. I make it, point it out to the boards, please do this to protect them. Okay, let me, let me talk to the Board of Health and the Building Inspector about this and see how we can condition this. Yep. To make sure that they're alerted about something like this, if, and you know that it's going to happen over the years, the Craftsman-Tradesman, that, you know, there's going to be people that are going to be coming in and out. I mean, I've already talked to Paul Boucher, our Building Commissioner, about the Craftsman -Tradesman buildings in town, and trying to keep track of what businesses are in there. But so he told me that when one leaves and a new one goes in, they have to get a building permit. So I, you know, I can talk to him more about that and to see, you know, how this would go.
Yeah, you brought up a point that with that store, that the usage of that bay went up to, you said 200?
200 gallons a day.
200 gallons a day for that bay? So that means the other two wouldn't be using that much?
No. No, they use, it's somewhere around, I think, 30 gallons a day per bay.
Okay. And then the next question I got now, is that 200 per day, is that, that's based on that store?
Correct.
That you say is going to be in there? Now, if another, say, store or convenience store went in there, or say, a little restaurant went in there, would that go up?
You can't do it. You can't do it. Can't do it. You won't be able to do it. A restaurant would be 1,000 gallons per day minimum. And that's why there's, when they had the 1978 state sanitary code, 310 CMR 150, one of the things that they relied on back then was 200% of the water meter readings. And it was a pretty, it was a pretty good practice to have in there, where you'd look at the actual water meter readings, and then you use 200% of that to give you a 100% safety factor. That still presently exists in the regulations. So right now, for new construction, we're helped in the Board of Health rating on the 15 203 for the regular flows for that there. Now, the ice cream shop, I looked at that when they came to this, and I said, look at, the only way that this thing can move forward is if you can demonstrate that you have a unique type flow conditions, and I can't tell you if you have that right now. When they walked in the door, I said, the only way you're going to find that out is we need to, we need to analyze, we need to collect data, I mean, you put it together, and then we need to vet it down to DEP. So we started at DEP Lakeville, got bounced over to Brett Rowe, and Brett bounced us to Boston, and then this one all the way up. And the permit is signed by the Chief of the Wastewater Section for the entire state. Mrs. Chubb, she signed it, saying, okay, this is what you have, and it only can be ice cream only. It is very well prescribed in the permit. So that's what we're stuck with. And there's no way, there's no way they can go over 1,000 gallons per day on this thing. It won't be allowed. It won't be allowed by DEP, it won't be allowed by the Board of Health. You just can't do it. So they can't come in here with a fast food restaurant. They can't come in here with a, I heard they were trying, years ago, maybe you get a Dunkin' Drive-Thru. That's not happening, you know? It's just, there's just not enough room to do something in there and protect that well. All right, anything else, Mr. Weston?
Well, I was just, like you say, things get passed, and then all of a sudden, a few years later, somebody else goes in there, and then the water usage will go up. That's my concern.
This is, this is my thoughts on this. What I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to close the public hearing, and then I don't think we're going to, I think I'd like to get the decision written up, and then we'll vote on it. I think we've gotten, I think we've talked about any concerns that we've had, but I'd like to, to get a decision. I don't know if they have attorneys that represent this project. They have one.
The question I would have is how can you vote on something if you don't know what their water usage is?
Well.
Because if they're.
As Posersky said, that's going to be done by the state. That's the.
I realize that, but you're voting on something that if they have to downsize it, you're going to have to vote on it again, wouldn't you?
We're voting on the, our concern isn't the water and the termination of the water. Us is just the dimensional requirements, make sure that it fits everything that the planning board has to look at. But as Mr. Posersky said, that if this isn't allowed by the state, the water usage, then this isn't going to, it can't happen. So it's like.
It can be said as a condition.
Yeah, we could put that in as a condition.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. And, I mean, a lot of times, over the years, when I was in the business, you could, you could vote on a plan, but it doesn't necessarily mean that when it goes to Conservation, and Conservation votes it down, then the plan that the Planning Board approved can't work.
Well, yeah.
Conservation voted it down, yeah. So, so, you know, everything, all the boxes have to be checked by all the boards before a project and go ahead. So.
Do they have any idea when you may be notified what your water usage will be?
No, I actually got to follow up. It's the holiday season, but I checked with, I checked with Rich Johnson at Amory last week, and he said he's going to try to put something together this week to get to the client, to get him on board, so then he can go to DEP. I did tell him, I says, you got to talk to the water treatment operator, because you're going to need, you need the flows, you need the chemical tests, and you need to take a look at that, and then see if you want, if we then can take that to DEP. The one thing that I could do for them is get the flow assessment and say, okay, this is what DEP feels the flow is, and we know what that flow is. Now, if we came back before and this came over 1,000 gallons per day, I'd say, guys, it's all bets off, we're done. But it didn't, and we're not done yet, and Jim's absolutely right. We don't get DEP, the Water Supply Section, then this project doesn't get off the ground. Plain and simple.
Have you received anything from Concom? Have they approved or?
Concom told us that they wanted you guys to approve it. We went to one hearing a while ago. I wasn't there. One of my younger engineers was. And they said they wanted you guys to approve it, then come see them. Well, I'm going next week to see them on the 5th, so I'm going to go see them.
Yeah, I know they've mentioned something about the asphalt.
Yeah, yeah.
They should have all their conditions here for approval. That should be either working with us or prior to any decision we make. I mean, it's a special permit, right?
No, the project's done. Well, we're not, we're not, I don't think we want to vote on it tonight anyway, because I still have questions to ask the Board of Health and the Building Inspector about how they're going to regulate and monitor these buildings. So what I would like to do is, is tonight, if it's all right with the board, I'd like to at least close the public hearing, because I think we've answered all Mr. Weston's concerns as far as the Planning Board is concerned. I think that if he has any other concerns, you really got to see the Board of Health or, you know, or Conservation, if they have a gun to Conservation.
I've been talking with Mr. McLaughlin, so.
That's hard to believe.
Well, still the way you get things done.
Right, no. But so you still have another board to go through, but I think as far as the Planning Board is concerned, that I think we've, I think we've addressed all your concerns as far as the Planning Board.
But not to say if you don't show up that we'll be happy to listen to any further concerns you might have.
Sure, yeah. We always do.
I just, I just kind of wonder the time period when the water thing will be decided, when we're another, and then we.
I wish I had the answer for you.
Well, because, you know, you guys and Conservation's going to be going through all this, and a lot of it may be meaningless, a lot of wasted time if you can't get the water to stop.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, that's what he said, and.
But that's a double edged sword, because I got to get planning, I got to get Concom, I got to get DEP, I have wastewater, water supply, and I still got Board of Health to do. Well, I suppose you had to come up with a plan. Yeah. You had to come up with a plan to present to the state, saying, you know, we have this many buildings on site, we have, you know, the building out back, we have the building out front. So they had to come up with a plan anyway. So like, all this stuff, it's like, it's like a work in a puzzle. And you can't, you can't just do one, you have to have everything working together. So I know it's, it's a little puzzling, but.
Well, most of the time, the water usage wouldn't be a problem.
Right, right. Yeah, it's just this area.
So that would eliminate that.
Yeah. All right. If that's all we have, I do have the conditions here, the north side or right property line fence to be installed if needed at the end of the project, and then the active loading and the fire lane only marked in red. And I will speak to the Board of Health and the Building Inspector about this tomorrow.
Now, you're talking about conditions?
Yeah, I was just saying, yeah, I don't know if there's anything else. I mean, we're not, I mean, we can discuss, it would be nice to have some sort of rough draft conditions by our next meeting, but was there something else?
Oh.
Oh, was there signs? We're going to apply for a sign permit. Okay. Yeah, that's in the, that's in our letters, and Andy's put that in there as well. Okay. And one of the things of the signed permit in the Fire Department put in there that we must visibly display the address. Yes, that's important. Yeah, and, yeah, I get to talk to the Building Inspector about that, too. I mean, because I had to do work where I had to go from, you know, find an address, and there's a lot of signs, but a lot of them don't have the numbers of the building on it. Makes it difficult to find. So you're going to, just to understand, talk to them, come up with their recommendations? What do you need from us at this point? You asked if we had an attorney on board? Well, just, if he had an attorney on board so that he could rough draft us a decision, and then we can send that to K and P Law to look at it for us. And like I said, the two conditions so far were the fence to be stalled on the north side at the end of the project if needed, and then the other one, active loading and the fire lane only marked, that's marked in red on the plan.
Deliveries were, for the ice cream, were to take place off hours. A vermin control plan was also mentioned, and that was all I had.
Okay. All right.
And there was, there's something here about, I made a note about it, but I can't see how it, so I won't ask.
Delivery, okay, so we don't know what the delivery hours are going to be, but you're going to have trucks there, you're going to have people going to the, to the Craftsman -Tradesman?
Oh, no, it was for the ice cream shop.
Okay.
Because they put in a loading bay out front, and there's traffic issues, and maybe kids running around, and all of that. But that was something that was proposed by you.
Right, right. And I believe the owner said last time that they've always had the deliveries off hours anyways for that particular reason, with kids running around. All right, yeah, if that could be accomplished, that would be good, and then we could send it off to our lawyers until we get a planner in place to do this type of work. So, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 287 Tremont Street?
I will so make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, so, Kevin, are you still with us?
I am.
I was wondering if my battery went dead yet, but, all right. Okay, so we're, we've got a motion to close the public hearing, so let's take a vote on that. Mr. Shea?
Tony Lee Shea says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Alan Sudillo, aye.
Okay. Okay, so, and we'll also need, so do you, do you think we can, so we'll have to continue this hearing to January 11th? Now, I know that there was a time constriction that Jim Walsh talked about with Ziv, but he had agreed with something or talked about it with you? Yeah, I thought we took care of that. I'll send an email tomorrow, extend in the decision to what? Okay. End of February one? What do you, what do you need from us? Because I thought we already covered it all the way through the end of January is what Jim and I talked about.
Yeah, because it's a special permit they have extended.
Okay, I remember we talked about it, wasn't quite sure. I just didn't want to, I just didn't want that to expire and then have. I'll get you a letter. Yeah, okay. End of February, fine? Yes, that would be fine. All right, so, so I need a, so, so entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 287 Tremont Street to January 11th at 7:00.
Tony Lee Shea so makes that motion.
Okay.
Alan Sudillo, seconds.
All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Shea?
Tony Lee Shea says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Alan Sudillo, aye.
All right. All right, um, all right, so we'll, we'll see you at our next meeting. Thank you. Yeah, have a nice New Year, everybody.
You, too.
Thank you, Mr. Weston.
You're welcome.
Good to see you again. I hope you had a Merry Christmas, but have a good New Year.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Planning Board Member notes. So I just want to say that it was last week, I think, there was a letter that was put out to affirm to look for our new, hopefully, town planner, and our town, I was working with the town administrator, the town administrator's going to be gone in two days, so I'm going to have to approach the interim town administrator, and I think, I think I'm going to talk to him about whether, I think we need an interim town planner, because I don't know how long this thing's going to take, so that's where it stands right now. I just thought I'd let the board know. Is there anything else that any of the board members have to say? If not, I'll wish everybody a Happy New Year, round the audience, and to all the board members, and to our every 58 people working with us tonight. And, see, we have this three minutes to approve that are on, on the, in two of them we have, the last one we don't, so has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes for 11/9/21? And after you've through looking at them, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of 11/9/21, as written. Kevin, did you get the email with these minutes?
I did.
Okay.
Cornelius Shea makes a motion to approve the minutes of November 23rd, 2021?
11/9/21 is the first set. Did you read those?
I did read those, and I was, I was fine with those also.
I'll second for the 9th.
9th, okay. I'll have to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 9th, 2021.
Okay, so that was Mr. Shea, Mr. Gasky. All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay. All right, but then we have the minutes of 11/23/21.
Cornelius Shea makes a motion to approve the minutes of November 23rd, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second, Mr. Shea and Ellen, and so we'll take a roll call vote starting with Mr. Shea.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay, so the motion carries, five, zero.
We do have one more from October 12th of 2021. I'm probably the only one that actually has it, so...
Oh, did we not? Oh, we're not? Okay, let me look at that tomorrow when I come in.
Sure, yeah.
So you say in October 12th? Okay. We'll take a look at that for our next meeting.
No, I thought, I thought we approved that one, because that was one of the abstains from.
I still have it on, on my agenda, so I might be wrong, but...
I'll, I'll take a look and see if we approve those that are...
Yeah, I think we, I think that one was approved, because I had to abstain, because I was out of town for that one.
Okay, all right.
That was when my son was getting married.
I'll, I'll take a look to make sure it's...
Oh, yeah, you were out of town on that one, yeah.
Okay, our next meeting is January 11th, and of the New Year, 22, so a motion for adjournment.
Cornelius Shea makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay, so thank you and good night, everyone. Thank you, Kevin, for, for having...